Good evening and welcome to the July 12th meeting of the Glendale City Council Roll Call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Here.
Garp, Pedian.
Here.
Tananian.
Here.
Mayor Devine.
Here. Next item, please.
This item is a flag salute led by Councilmember Sim.
Please join me in renewing our pledge of allegiance, our flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for this evening's invocation. As we became witness to the recent spate of violence and killing involving law enforcement and citizens of our nation, we are saddened and seek answers to the question of why. We ask for explanations and we come up short as individuals, as neighbors, as citizens of our troubled nation. This period of grief must also be a time of listening, of caring, trying to understand one another, not on our terms but by walking in the shoes of our brothers and sisters. We pray for all who lost their lives over the course of the last few weeks regardless of politics or race or occupation. We pray for their children, their spouses, their loved ones, their friends, their communities, their colleagues. We pray and we ask that we be given the courage to ask hard questions and be willing to listen to difficult answers. These words were spoken by Robert F. Kennedy on the evening of the assassination of Dr. Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. Remind us of what will help us through this period and give us the task that we must face at hand. He said, quote, "What we need in the United States is not division. What we need in the United States is not hatred. What we need in the United States is not violence and lawlessness but is love and wisdom and compassion towards one another and a feeling of justice towards those who still suffer within our country whether they be white or whether they be black," end quote. We pray and we ask for forgiveness because we have all failed. Each of us has failed to show love and compassion towards our fellow man and woman. We have failed to live up to our higher ideals as Americans, so we pray tonight that we use this time to live up to our ideals as Americans. Let us pray for peace in our neighborhoods, in our cities around our country and around the world tonight and always. Amen.
Before I go on to the next item, to follow up on Mr. Kusakian's very touching words, in light of the recent violence across our country, I'd like to request that we adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of the five officers killed in Dallas and in support, in support of our local police officers who work honorably and courageously every day to keep us safe in Glendale. So I would ask that we remember that at the end of the meeting. But at this time, I would like to call Chief Castro to the podium to address to council and to our residents exactly what precautions our police department is taking to prevent or to promote actually the safety and professionalism of our department.
And Madam Mayor, before Chief Castro addresses these chambers, let me just read that the agenda for the July 12, 2016 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, July 7, 2016 on the Bolton Board outside City Hall.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may take a moment just before we talk about that topic to answer a couple of questions the public and you may have, one is why am I wearing a beard and two, why is it so gray? We're actually doing a fundraiser for one of our volunteers in the police department who was the victim of a drive-by shooting back in 1999. And as a result, he recently had a stroke and so the police officers are raising funds to build a ramp so that he'll be able to get in and out of his home, something that he hasn't been able to do since that stroke and we've been assisting him with that. So members of our department came up with the idea to grow beards and all the officers who are growing a beard are paying money to help support this project and to help our friend. Now, when they proposed the project to me, they thought my beard would look like that, but I haven't seen that in probably about 30 years, so... But I just wanted to let the community know, you see our officers, we look a little fuzzy but it's for a very, very good cause, yes.
I just want to say that Jorge is one of my absolute favorite people in all of Glendale. He is the absolute most wonderful, dedicated, public servant, been volunteering for many years for the police department and always out and about. Is there a slide that shows maybe people at home if they feel compelled to donate and help your cause of a place where they could send money? Terrific.
Yes, there is a GoFundMe page that is available, so they can go on to that and it's Elevate George Campaign that we're doing and actually Channel 5 News will be doing a story on it today across the street interviewing some of our officers to help bring light to this worthy cause that we're trying to help out with. And on to the other news, yes, we were devastated over this weekend and I can tell you that the loss of that life, the loss of any life in this country is something that law enforcement does not take lightly. And the community of Glendale can be assured that their police department and their fire department are prepared to respond to any types of emergencies or anyone that may try to do harm to any of our citizens or any employees of the city of Glendale. Over the weekend, we did have our officers riding in two-person cars. That was because of the number of intelligence reports we were getting, we didn't really know what was going to transpire across the country. You can well imagine, the families of our officers are very concerned about their loved ones coming to work, so that was a way to bring a level of comfort to our employees as well as make sure that our officers were able to respond to any types of problems that occurred within the city of Glendale and knowing that we may have to also respond to our neighboring cities because we just didn't know what was going to transpire. The outpouring from our community has been tremendous. We've been getting a lot of phone calls. We had people bringing flowers and food all weekend long thanking our officers for the jobs that we do each and every day and a great part of that is due to the support of all of our city leaders who ensure that our employees have the proper equipment and training to be able to do their job. It's no coincidence that we have one of the safest cities in the United States and it is because of the great partnership we have with our community and the professionalism of all of our employees. But you can be rest assured that our officers are being extremely vigilant. We are going out there answering all the calls as we normally would and we're asking the public to continue to do what you've always done best for us. Partner with us, work with us. If you see something, please say something if it doesn't look right and be assured that our officers will not be stepping away from their duties. They will engage and they will do their jobs like we have. And we are basically looking for ways that we can continue to partner with the community, to be involved in the many different aspects of this community because our officers are, many of them, products of the city of Glendale. So I hope that answers your questions. If you have anything else I can answer for you, I'd be more than happy to do it this time.
Councilmember Friedman?
Well, I'm, you know, I think I speak for everybody up here that we were all, I'm sure, very horrified about what happened and very, I was very happy to get an email from you very soon after talking about the precautions that you have put into place so that we could be assured that the men and women that are protecting our community are also going to be protected. I would like, and I don't know if I need a second from one of my colleagues, but at another time, I would like you to come back on a, you know, sort of a tangential presentation and talk to us about the techniques that you have been working with your officers on over the, I think for the last several years about de-escalation, about diversity, about mental health, all of the things that have led up to in some cases people's sometimes fear of police or fear of overreaction, fear of being racially profiled and treated unfairly. I'd like to hear myself and be reassured that we're not going to have those kinds of issues in Glendale and I know you've been taking great strides towards that. And I've gotten emails from the community in the last week, you know, I've seen a real escalation of people being concerned about that as well and I think wanting to be reassured and wanting maybe a place to come and ask questions, make suggestions. So I'd like to have one of my colleagues maybe second us having, I don't know if it needs to be a workshop, but at least a presentation and a place where the public can come and have any of their questions answered.
Chief, if you remember right after Ferguson, I think you were pretty new at that point and I was mayor, I asked you for that report and you came and gave it to us and if it would make us feel better to hear it again, sure, let's do it again.
Well, actually, if I can add that we're planning on doing that for Work Boot the next, in August. So we'll get that information, the public will be invited and you can share that with all of us.
It'd be my pleasure.
In fact, Madam Mayor, I'm so confident that what we're doing is proper and correct because during my term, perhaps 10 months ago, there was a prospective Black Lives Matter March and protest designating Glendale. But after the organizers were informed, I believe Tom Lorenz was the liaison, informed them of our diversity and our training, that they stood down. So I think this may be a very good opportunity to expose to our community and other police departments, if I may be so bold as to insinuate that we are the best, as to how we handle diversity and community outreach. I think it's a great idea and...
Absolutely, and you know, these are, these are ongoing, these are issues that evolve, police work evolves and it's something that, you know, as it ebbs and wanes in the public's eye, I think we need to always be there to talk about how we, this is something that's ongoing all the time and that we do evolve. And I think right now there are people that have questions and, you know, we need to be sure that we're responsive. And so I'm really glad to hear that we're doing the Work Boot Tuesday that's going to address this issue in August. I didn't know that it was, that was kind of its intended goal, so I'm really happy and I hope that the public does come and participate. And I also would ask that you have your community liaison officers get the word out to the public through social media, through Nextdoor and all the places where people are having these discussions so that they know that there's an opportunity to participate.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thanks very much. Be safe. Next item, please.
Next item is Agenda Preview for the meetings of Tuesday, July 19, 2016.
Ms. Spears?
Madam Mayor, Members of the City Council for July 19th, for the, we have a special meeting Tuesday in the morning for the Glendale City Council at 10:00 AM. Director of Community Development, this is regarding our planning workshop and this is our second workshop regarding the South Glendale Community Plan. That afternoon, we do have a Housing Authority meeting to commence at 3:00 PM. Director of Community Development, this is regarding the consideration of five affordable senior housing development proposals on housing authority-owned property at Fifth Street and Sonora Avenue. This is in response to the Housing Authority's request for proposals. That evening for the council meeting to commence at 6:00 PM, we have a number of consent items. Interim Director of Community Services and Parks, this is approval of All for Health, Health for All, as the operator of the Pacific Health Clinic. Directors of Community Development and Public Works, this is regarding disbanding existing pedestrian safety task force and establishing a new pedestrian safety advisory committee to participate in the development of the citywide pedestrian plan as well as the citywide safety educational initiative. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, we have a resolution for the Glendale Water and Power Public Benefit Programs and this is regarding budgets for fiscal years 1617 and 1718 and authorization to enter into agreements to implement said programs. Also, General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, this is a contract to award West Coast Arboris and they provide power line clearance for our trees, so it's trimming of the tree services and tree removal services and this is for our water facilities. Lastly, on consent, we have General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, and this is a report on proposals received for the Power Island Equipment and this is regarding the proposed repowering of Grayson Power Plant. Under Action Items, General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, resolutions for intent to reimburse certain expenditures from proceeds of proposed tax-exempt financing. And the last two items, Interim Director of Community Services and Parks and Director of Community Development, this is adding Chapter 8.80 to the Glendale Municipal Code and this is to define blighted, deteriorated areas relating to the city's use of community development block grant funds for the city's code enforcement program. And lastly, General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, this is an exclusive negotiating agreement with Waste Management, Inc., as well as OWS, Inc., for development of integrated resource recovery and energy conservation facility and this is on city-owned properties. And that concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Madam Mayor, the next item is Commendations for City Hall Student Ambassadors, if you'll allow me to approach the podium. Ask our student, Hall Ambassador, student City Hall ambassadors to come up, not the ones who are actually working this evening but the ones that just completed their, the recent program of service. We have, for a number of years now, had this program instituted at City Hall where we have students from our local high schools and actually this year we had a student from Burbank as well, from the Options for Youth School come and actually they have to either be a student living in Glendale or they have to be attending high school in Glendale, participate in the program. What the program is essentially, students will act as greeters and ushers and essentially guide individuals who have come to City Hall, perhaps for the first time, or greet some of our regular visitors and explain to them how the meeting is conducted and essentially guide them through the process. So tonight, it is my distinct honor and pleasure to recognize some of our best and finest of the city of Glendale, Arghiti Karamyan from Options for Youth in Burbank, Begani Lomatio from Glendale High School, Derek Manukian from Clark Magnet High School, Lina Petrosian from Clark Magnet High School, Mathias Pachalian from Glendale High School, Matthew Klingerman from Glendale High School, Yerine Kwan from Clark Magnet High School, Viveka Ann Rush from Hoover High School. So this is normally about a four-month program. It's every Tuesday evening they come and they'll, they'll be the smiling faces that greet the people who walk into City Hall, but this group of individuals was actually in the program for five months. They were so good, we decided to extend their service by one month. So they are here to be recognized and receive the appreciation and the gratitude of all of us here in the chambers and everyone living in Glendale. So let's please give them a round of applause.
That's what happens when you do a good job, you get asked to do more. Let me read the pro... No, that one. Let me read the proclamation for you all. "In recognition of your participation in the City Hall Student Ambassador Program, I commend your dedication to helping the public during our city council meetings. Your guidance has benefited residents throughout the community and on behalf of the city of Glendale, I wish you continued success on all of your future endeavors." And let me ask you, do you all have pins? Did you all get a pin? Well, let's give them a pin.
That's for graduation.
Oh, is that right? Let's see, do you want to...
Give that to Madam Mayor.
Some of these down. Split them up.
Oh.
Pins, please.
Sure.
How's it going, Charlie?
I'll take two.
I have a note here. Remember the main.
Okay. Are you still here?
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Viveka.
Begani?
Do you want to take this and give it to me?
Begani.
Can someone give it to her?
Congratulations. Congratulations and we have a pin for you.
Do a quick, a picture with all of us?
Come this way and let's face outward.
You all are like family speaking.
We'll get you. Start the second round.
Oh, good.
Ah, thank you. Squeeze and the mayor doesn't fight. All right, hold on.
Not even ranked.
One, two, three.
Oh, I just, can I have a, actually, the committee. You getting another one? This is such, such good training for these kids and I think a great experience, so thank you all for doing this. And next item.
Next item is Commendation for Cruise Night Sponsors.
And that would be, okay.
Good evening, Mayor Devine, Members of the Council, City Staff. The Community Services and Parks Department would like to invite you to the 23rd Annual Glendale Cruise Night, which will be held this Saturday, July 16, on Brand Boulevard between 5:30 and 10:30. This year's entertainment will be provided once again by Mr. Rock and Roll, Brian Byrne. We'll have three bands performing, Desperado, an Eagles tribute band, Surfing, Beach Boys tribute band, and Surfaries, which will sing their annual song, Wipeout, their popular song, I'm sorry. I'm excited to say that this year is the fourth year that Cruise Night is fully sponsored by corporate sponsorships and donations. We send out our sponsorship package in December and we've been receiving a lot of interest in sponsorships. And our main sponsors this year are once again Downtown Glendale Association as a naming sponsor and Economic Development, City of Glendale's Economic Development Division as a presented by sponsor. So with that being said, I'd like to invite Mr. Joe Stidick from the Downtown Glendale Association and Mr. Phil Lanzifame from the Community Development Department, Economic Development Division, to accept their commendations.
Thank you. Be happy to read the commendations. Thank you for your support. "On behalf of the city of Glendale and the city council, I would like to express my sincere appreciation for your presented by sponsorship of the 2016 Glendale Cruise Night. Your commitment and support to keep this event thriving is truly remarkable. Congratulations on being part of the 23rd Annual Glendale Cruise Night. Thank you both."
Thank you. Say something. Mayor and Councilmen, Councilmembers, thank you very much for the award. On behalf of DGA, we accept that. It's all accepted on behalf of our staff and all our people that are working out on the streets every day, doing a good job, and the support that we receive from the city and their staff. And I just want to add a side note, we have Glendale PD officers who come and attend our board meetings and I have to say they're absolutely superb in what they do in terms of working with us and trying to improve the DGA area in general and Glendale in general. They just do an excellent job, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
He has yours.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks, all. It'll be a good show.
How many did we have last year, Mr. Toth? There were about 30,000 people at Cruise Night? More than 30,000 people at our Cruise Night?
Yeah. Mayor Devine, we estimate between 40,000 to 45,000 people attend the event. We have 300 vehicles that are signed up this year. We have about $49,000 in corporate donations, not including our car registration, so we hit a record this year in sponsorships, which is very exciting. And we'll also have fireworks this year at 10:30, our firework finale. So basically, the program starts at 5:30 and will end at 10:30. And the main stage will be at Brandon Milford.
Thank you. Great job.
We'll see you there. Thank you.
Hope to see everybody there.
Thank you.
Next item.
Next item is a proclamation for July as Parks and Recreation Month.
Come on down. Oh, look at this. You guys can buy that off.
Well, maybe.
Good evening, Mayor Devine, City Council and City Staff. My name is Norma Maurer, Community Services Supervisor for the Community Services and Parks Department. I am here with Andrea Mokada, the Recreation Specialist who helps to oversee the One Glendale After-School Youth Sports Program. We also have a few of the One Glendale program participants in attendance, two from each school. One Glendale is an after-school youth sports program in collaboration with the Glendale Parks and Open Space Foundation and Glendale Unified School District. In 2015-16, One Glendale provided coaching for the sports of flag football, basketball, soccer, and volleyball to 4th and 5th graders at four elementary schools in South Glendale. One Glendale will expand to eight schools in the upcoming year. This program not only teaches the fundamentals about sports, but really is more about teaching the players about good sportsmanship, leadership, self-confidence, and making healthy choices. This is one of many valuable programs offered through the year through the City of Glendale Community Services and Parks Department. We are in the middle of our peak season of summer. We have programs for recreation for children like swim lessons and day camps, but let's not forget the activities we have for our adults and our seniors. Pickleball is a popular sport that some people, the people of all ages can play. We also have basketball, soccer, tennis, and exercise programs available. If sports isn't your thing, we also have art or dance classes at various facilities throughout Glendale. Lastly, for families, we have concerts in the park and our annual Cruise Night coming up this Saturday. Parks really do make life better and with that, we are proud to accept that July as Parks and Recreation Month proclamation this evening. Thank you. And a couple of kids have prepared a little speech they'd like to say, so...
Okay, well, I was going to ask them to introduce themselves.
Okay, you can do that too.
Let's hear this.
One at a time, yeah.
Hi, my name is Jamie Bowman and I go to Ceritos Elementary School and I wanted to thank you for allowing for the One Glendale Program Possible. I learned how to play as a team.
Hi, my name is Lucas Perez. I go to John Marshall Elementary School. I want to thank you for allowing, you for allowing the One Glendale Program Possible. I learned sportsmanship and how to play different sports.
Hi, my name is Isabella Takshira and I go to John Marshall Elementary School. I want to thank you for allowing One Glendale Sports Possible. I learned how to work as, as a team. I also learned how sports can be important.
Hi, my name is Jessica Hernandez and I go to Ceritos Elementary School and I would like to thank you guys for making the One Glendale Program Possible. And a thing I learned is that, sorry, is that you don't need to yell with your teammates about problems, that it's better to just work it out calmly. Yeah.
Hey, all right, that's a good life skill, isn't it?
Hi, my name is Joanna Lucio and I go to Horseman Elementary School. I want to thank you for allowing for the One Glendale Program Possible. I learned that when I practice every day, I am more healthy and I feel better about myself.
Good.
Hi, my name is Fernando Gallegos and I go to Thomas Edison Elementary School. I want to thank you for allowing, for the One Glendale Program Possible. I learned sportsmanship and how to play together with teammates.
Thank you. That was great.
Thank you all. And with that, we would happily accept the proclamation and thank you for all your support over the years.
Okay, and we have pins for each of the kids.
Great.
How many of you played soccer? Who played soccer? Who played basketball? Who played volleyball? What am I forgetting?
Baseball.
Baseball, football.
Football.
Oh, flag football, that was fun, I was there. Great, good, good, good. Thank you for your messages and I will present the proclamation. Thank you.
Good.
Good job.
Take a picture, take a picture, just film it.
I'll just kind of photobomb, there you go.
Excuse me.
Okay, that's good, okay.
One more.
One more.
I would like to thank you for allowing the One Glendale program possible. I learned that when I practice every day, I am more healthy and I feel better about myself.
That's great.
And with that, we would happily accept the proclamation and thank you for all your support over the years.
Okay, and we have pins for each of the kids. How many of you played soccer? Who played soccer? Who played basketball? Who played volleyball? What am I forgetting?
Baseball.
Baseball, football. Oh, flag football, that was fun. I was there. Great, good, good, good. Thank you for your messages, and I will present the proclamation. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I'll just kind of photobomb. There you go. Okay, that's good. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Give them an opportunity to...
Keep some, give a couple to our, and then get rid of the box.
Okay, next item, Mr. Toth.
Next item is the items including minutes following our routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before motion is proposed. Madam Mayor, we do have a request to pull 4C.
And I'd like to pull 4F.
I'd like to pull 4B, Madam Mayor. I'm sorry, 41. 4B1.
4B.
1.
4F.
I'm sorry, 4B and 4F. Thank you.
And do we have a motion for the remainder of the... So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Darpetian? Najarian?
Yes.
Sananian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes, and will you read into the record, please, 4B?
Certainly. 4B is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power Regarding Three-Year Professional Services Agreement for Design Project Management, Construction Management, Inspection Services for Various Public Water System Activities. B1 is a motion authorizing City Manager or is designated to execute three-year professional services agreement, PSAs, with two qualified consultants, one with Civil Source Inc., and one with Hazen and Sawyer. Attacked on behalf of the city as owners, engineers for design and oversight on various public water system activities in amount of $750,000 per consultant for three years.
Okay, Mr. Councilmember Sananian?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So, it's a very large contract, and no matter how I read the staff report, I don't quite understand how these companies that are being recommended were vetted out. All I see is that, well, they're able to do it, so this is who we recommend. And the only other fact that I know is that there are nine firms that participated in the RFP.
So, rather than keep a full stable of engineers at GWP Water, what we will do is do an RFP/RFQ selection process, vet a outside party that we can then have in the bullpen, if you will, of contract engineers. So, we would go through this process in anticipation of the 750 over the three-year period, and as projects come up, actually, it's two phases of competition for the work that these particular firms would do. First, we vet them through an initial phase, as I mentioned, and then, as projects do come up, we ask each one of them, give us a price. And who can give us the better price for that particular project? We would end up going with that up to the amount that you see on your agreement. So, certainly Steve or Mike DeGhetto can give you more detail about the success of doing our work this way, but ostensibly, it keeps our staff costs down and our overhead. So, we just outsource it.
Sounds good. How do we end up from nine to these two entities?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sananian? The vetting process is essentially who is most responsive to the RFP. In this case, the firms that offer us the best deal that we can get. Some firms will give us lip service, they'll give us minimal staffing, they'll give us not-quite-meeting the scope of what we need, and the diversity. There are some cases where firms aren't as diverse in their ability to provide us a service, and ultimately, cost. In this particular case, these were the two most economically feasible participants. And as Mr. Ochoa said, two items, really. One, this is a not-to-exceed. So, this is not, if we don't need to do the work, we won't do the work. It's just our ability so that when we get into a pinch, we know we have a couple of projects, we listed them. If we have an emergency project, we don't have to then come back to you, go through a full vetting process. We've done that, we have them on a retainer, if you will. And then, as Mr. Ochoa indicated, we make them compete against each other. So, at any particular time, maybe more hungry than the other one, one may be busier, one may be more willing to reduce their price in order to get the work.
Okay, and I understand that explanation, but not only none of that is in the report, but not, you, I didn't hear any details, like what are these terms that they're offering that are better than the others? I understand that that's what it was based on, but specifically, what is it that they've offered us that's better than the other seven?
So, we'll ask for specific details on the professional services in which they are going to give us. We'll ask for staff hours. Sometimes you'll see staff hours very low, which means they're not giving us a lot of staff hours and charging us more money for it. You'll see firms, as I said, that aren't able to do all of the types of work that we do, so work on all of our different projects, whether it's pipeline, reservoir, pump station. In this case, you'll see we listed also the water treatment and the chlorinization of the water. So, we look for the most diverse firm, but I have to tell you, Mr. Sananian, in this case, it really was price. These were the two most economical of the firms. It's not always the case, I know, in RFP process, that we go on price alone. In this case, it was. And our experience with some of the other firms was, we didn't have as good a luck. A lot of times, the projects, they're very busy firms that sometimes will put us to the side. Sometimes we get the B or C team, I hate to say it, but that's the case. In this particular case, we feel comfortable that we're getting, they are not gigantic firms, huge firms, they're manageable firms that are going to give us quality.
You say that because we've had experience with some of the other firms?
Some of the firms, yes. And not that they're not good firms, it's just that we know they're extremely large, multinational firms, and that doesn't always bode well for us on smaller projects. And Madam Mayor, members of the council, that is probably the biggest issue. This is a small, this is a very small situation. So, the bigger firms just either aren't interested, which is why their price goes up, and they'd rather, you know, we had some firms that didn't even bid, because this was just too small for them. So, we get a nice-sized firm, a right-sized firm, a right fit for us, and in this particular case, it was always, it was also very economical for us as well. And you make a good point, Mr. Sananian, in the future, we'll go into a little more detail on the vetting process. That's a very good point.
Right, indeed. I'm sure your vetting process was very comprehensive, very detailed, but the presentation of that vetting process is virtually non-existent on paper. So, I'm not doubting what you're saying, but to make the point, I'm going to vote against this item, just because it's not in front of me. I haven't had the chance to look at anything.
And again, a very good point, in the future, we'll lay out in more detail the process that we went through.
I have one card, and that's Evelyn Horrigan.
That's on 4C, Madam Mayor.
Oh.
This is for 4B.
Oh, 4C, okay. Can we have, again, a motion on this item, then? Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Darpetian? Najarian?
Yes.
Sananian?
No.
Mayor Devine?
Yes. 4C, we've already passed. Would you still like to speak on this? Did we pull C?
Yes, we did.
Oh, I thought we pulled F.
We pulled F as well.
Oh, and F, okay. All right. So, who is pulling, Mr.?
It's because of the card submitted, Madam Mayor. And as you make your way up to the podium, I'll re-dye them into the record.
Read that into the record.
Item 4C is Interim Director of Community Services and Parks Regarding Acceptance of Grant Funds from the County of Los Angeles Community and Senior Services for the Elderly Nutrition Program. C1 is a motion accepting the 936,696 subaward from the County of Los Angeles Department of Community and Senior Services for the Elderly Nutrition Program for the fiscal year 2016-20, and authorizing City Manager or his designated to execute all related contracts.
Evelyn?
I'll wait for the disturbance announcement later.
Okay, just a moment.
This is it? It's, although, although the presentation is related to this item, it is not directly related to the specific item.
I'll move 4C1.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Darpetian? Najarian?
Yes.
Sananian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes. Would you please read 4F into the record, please?
4F is Director of Public Works Regarding Herbicidal and Manual Weed Control Services for Right of Ways on City-Owned Hillside. F1 is Resolution Adopting a Request for Proposals for Herbicidal and Manual Weed Control Services for a City's Public Rights of Ways on City-owned Hillside, and Authorizing Director of Public Works to Solicit Proposals.
So, this is an RFP, and I know this is something that we do routinely, but, but when you bring it back, or maybe before then, you can give me some details, and I'll just give you a few of my concerns, and then you can either tell me how they're going to be addressed, you don't have to do it tonight, or that they are not going to be addressed, and why. So, first of all, I want to know how you and how our contractors are going to define what a weed is, especially on the hillsides, and I've seen people clear hillsides. For instance, where they just take everything that's green off of it, that's not a tree, and take out a lot of the native plants that would hold the hillside, you know, like toyans. Or they, or they carefully take out things that really are invasive weeds and leave good plants that provide habitat for animals and, you know, look good. So, I just want to be comforted that that's part of our RFP, and that our subcontractors know that, assuming you agree with me, that that's the way that we should be doing this, that we should be sensitive and not clear-cut things, and take the time to make sure that good plants remain, because plants are important. And also, that if they do use any herbicide, I'd like to know kind of what it is and what the safety profile is. And I know that there's increasing awareness about this, and as you know, Mr. Galanian, we've been getting complaints about the use of Roundup and different pesticides in our parks, and I'd like to know what we're going to be using, if it's safe, what effects does it have on any wildlife, insects, bees, butterflies, and all of that, so that it's, when we look back at this project, if anybody asks the questions, that we can all say with a straight face that we made sure that whatever we did was ecologically responsible, sustainable, and fed into the beauty and healthy of our hillsides and our right of ways. Okay? Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Move the item? Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Darpetian? Najarian?
Yes.
Sananian?
No.
Mayor Devine?
Yes. 4C, we've already passed. Would you still like to speak on this? Did we pull C?
Yes, we did.
Oh, I thought we pulled F.
We pulled F as well.
Oh, and F, okay. All right. So, who is pulling, Mr.?
It's because of the card submitted, Madam Mayor. And as you make your way up to the podium, I'll re-dye them into the record.
Read that into the record.
Item 4C is Interim Director of Community Services and Parks Regarding Acceptance of Grant Funds from the County of Los Angeles Community and Senior Services for the Elderly Nutrition Program. C1 is a motion accepting the 936,696 subaward from the County of Los Angeles Department of Community and Senior Services for the Elderly Nutrition Program for the fiscal year 2016-20, and authorizing City Manager or his designated to execute all related contracts.
Evelyn?
I'll wait for the disturbance announcement later.
Okay, just a moment.
This is it? It's, although, although the presentation is related to this item, it is not directly related to the specific item.
I'll move 4C1.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Darpetian? Najarian?
Yes.
Sananian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes. Would you please read 4F into the record, please?
4F is Director of Public Works Regarding Herbicidal and Manual Weed Control Services for Right of Ways on City-owned Hillside. F1 is Resolution Adopting a Request for Proposals for Herbicidal and Manual Weed Control Services for a City's Public Rights of Ways on City-owned Hillside, and authorizing Director of Public Works to Solicit Proposals.
So, this is an RFP, and I know this is something that we do routinely, but, but when you bring it back, or maybe before then, you can give me some details, and I'll just give you a few of my concerns, and then you can either tell me how they're going to be addressed, you don't have to do it tonight, or that they are not going to be addressed, and why. So, first of all, I want to know how you and how our contractors are going to define what a weed is, especially on the hillsides, and I've seen people clear hillsides. For instance, where they just take everything that's green off of it, that's not a tree, and take out a lot of the native plants that would hold the hillside, you know, like toyans. Or they, or they carefully take out things that really are invasive weeds and leave good plants that provide habitat for animals and, you know, look good. So, I just want to be comforted that that's part of our RFP, and that our subcontractors know that, assuming you agree with me, that that's the way that we should be doing this, that we should be sensitive and not clear-cut things, and take the time to make sure that good plants remain, because plants are important. And also, that if they do use any herbicide, I'd like to know kind of what it is and what the safety profile is. And I know that there's increasing awareness about this, and as you know, Mr. Galanian, we've been getting complaints about the use of Roundup and different pesticides in our parks, and I'd like to know what we're going to be using, if it's safe, what effects does it have on any wildlife, insects, bees, butterflies, and all of that, so that it's, when we look back at this project, if anybody asks the questions, that we can all say with a straight face that we made sure that whatever we did was ecologically responsible, sustainable, and fed into the beauty and healthy of our hillsides and our right of ways. Okay? Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Move the item? Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Darpetian? Najarian?
Yes.
Sananian?
No.
Mayor Devine?
Yes. 4C, we've already passed. Would you still like to speak on this? Did we pull C?
Yes, we did.
Oh, I thought we pulled F.
We pulled F as well.
Oh, and F, okay. All right. So, who is pulling, Mr.?
It's because of the card submitted, Madam Mayor. And as you make your way up to the podium, I'll re-dye them into the record.
Read that into the record.
Item 4C is Interim Director of Community Services and Parks Regarding Acceptance of Grant Funds from the County of Los Angeles Community and Senior Services for the Elderly Nutrition Program. C1 is a motion accepting the 936,696 subaward from the County of Los Angeles Department of Community and Senior Services for the Elderly Nutrition Program for the fiscal year 2016-20, and authorizing City Manager or his designated to execute all related contracts.
Evelyn?
I'll wait for the disturbance announcement later.
Okay, just a moment.
This is it? It's, although, although the presentation is related to this item, it is not directly related to the specific item.
I'll move 4C1.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Darpetian? Najarian?
Yes.
Sananian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes. Would you please read 4F into the record, please?
4F is Director of Public Works Regarding Herbicidal and Manual Weed Control Services for Right of Ways on City-owned Hillside. F1 is Resolution Adopting a Request for Proposals for Herbicidal and Manual Weed Control Services for a City's Public Rights of Ways on City-owned Hillside, and authorizing Director of Public Works to Solicit Proposals.
So, this is an RFP, and I know this is something that we do routinely, but, but when you bring it back, or maybe before then, you can give me some details, and I'll just give you a few of my concerns, and then you can either tell me how they're going to be addressed, you don't have to do it tonight, or that they are not going to be addressed, and why. So, first of all, I want to know how you and how our contractors are going to define what a weed is, especially on the hillsides, and I've seen people clear hillsides. For instance, where they just take everything that's green off of it, that's not a tree, and take out a lot of the native plants that would hold the hillside, you know, like toyans. Or they, or they carefully take out things that really are invasive weeds and leave good plants that provide habitat for animals and, you know, look good. So, I just want to be comforted that that's part of our RFP, and that our subcontractors know that, assuming you agree with me, that that's the way that we should be doing this, that we should be sensitive and not clear-cut things, and take the time to make sure that good plants remain, because plants are important. And also, that if they do use any herbicide, I'd like to know kind of what it is and what the safety profile is. And I know that there's increasing awareness about this, and as you know, Mr. Galanian, we've been getting complaints about the use of Roundup and different pesticides in our parks, and I'd like to know what we're going to be using, if it's safe, what effects does it have on any wildlife, insects, bees, butterflies, and all of that, so that it's, when we look back at this project, if anybody asks the questions, that we can all say with a straight face that we made sure that whatever we did was ecologically responsible, sustainable, and fed into the beauty and healthy of our hillsides and our right of ways. Okay? Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Move the item? Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Darpetian? Najarian?
Yes.
Sananian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item is City Council and Staff Comments.
Any comments?
I have one.
Councilmember Friedman? First, it's good to be back. Second, so, about a month ago, Pasadena did something that I was told a couple of years ago, when I tried to do this, was not possible, so I'm going to take another run at it, which is, they banned Styrofoam, the way that we banned single-use plastic bags. And there's a lot of great reasons to do this. Mr. Zern or Mr. Galanian will tell you that Styrofoam is one of the hardest materials[1508.48]
And I paid for my trip, too.
So there was no cost to the city at all. And to, yes, and I think it's very valuable for elected officials, because as I said, I saw river rock projects, I saw tunnel projects, I saw walking path projects and how they were doing them, and it was quite exciting and a good learning experience. And it's also interesting to learn how, where they get their funds. A lot of them, I would say, "Where did you get the $50 billion, $50 million to build that?" And they would say, "The government." And I'm thinking, "Where's our government? Where's our, you know, federal government? Let's, we should be getting more money for certain things as well." So yes, I thought it was a really worthwhile experience. Yeah. Yeah. And I hope that all of you felt the same. Okay, thank you. Next item.
Next item is community event announcements, three-minute portion.
And we have cards. Okay. All righty. Okay. Evelyn, Horgan, we'll try this again, huh? Talking about Meals on Wheels. Okay.
I'm very happy to be here. Thank you. And Mayor Devine, councilmembers, I'd like to make an announcement regarding the 39th Annual Meals on Wheels Benefit Luncheon. I invite all of you, plus residents of Glendale, Montrose, La Crescenta, Flint Ridge, La Cuenada, Tahanga, Sunland, Pahcoima, and Burbank, on Eagle Rock. All of these places, we have sent invitations to the congregations to provide luncheons of homemade salads, breads, quickbreads, deviled eggs. For this benefit luncheon, we've also asked a number of restaurants in Glendale to provide a nice big salad to share on the tables. It is a all-you-can-eat luncheon. Every bit of the donations goes to the Meals on Wheels program at the Salvation Army, which helps provide dinners for ill and disabled people. In Glendale, Montrose, La Crescenta, and I hesitate to say a larger area than that because I'm not quite sure, but I know that this Meals on Wheels program is a very, very big benefit to that program. Every year, we raise a certain amount of money through our $8 donations that we receive at the door or tickets that are sold in different congregations. We also, if we raise $2,000 worth of sales and donations, we get $1,000 from Thrivant Financial, which is a very, very significant grant. Therefore, I urge all of you who can make it to please go to the First United Methodist at 130 North Kenwood. That's in Carlson Hall there. It's on Kenwood between Wilson and Broadway. The date is Tuesday, July 19th. On that day, we will also collect paper goods for the Glendale Women's Shelter. And anyway, I just urge and appreciate all of the help and support from the City of Glendale. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And perhaps if people don't want to have lunch, they can just stop by and give a donation?
Yes.
On Wheels.
Yes, that's so true.
Oh, it's a wonderful program. My husband and I have delivered Meals on Wheels, and I know how grateful the people are when you knock on that door.
Oh, yes.
Have food for them. So thank you.
And it's significant for them, not only for the food, which is so necessary, but also the human contact. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Madam Mayor, if I can ask a quick question. Our city manager, are community services, Department Parks and Community Services provides this service, right?
We collaborate with the community partners to provide Meals on Wheels, yes.
And what's our, what's our buy-in to this?
Maggie, I'd have to defer to you.
What are the numbers? How much money are we contributing to?
Paraculously enough, we have Maggie Cavari in here.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, I'm Maggie Cavari with the Senior Meals Program. To answer your question, yes, there is a Meals on Wheels program through the Salvation Army. It is a hot meal delivered daily by volunteers, and it's a charge of $6.50 per meal. Our program for Parks and Recreation is a little different. It's seven frozen meals delivered once a week by our meal driver, a city meal driver. It is a $2.50 suggested donation, so we don't charge per meal. We ask for a suggested donation. So that is the difference. We serve about 11 of them.
We have a budget for, I mean, somehow?
We do. We just received funding from LA County for additional four years. It is a $238,000 per year allotment for congregate meals and for home-delivered meals. And the home-delivered meals is about $46,000, which pretty much is about 11,000 meals per year for our seniors.
That's great.
Thank you, Ms. Cavari.
Next up is Arren Asha Manukyan. Aga Manukyan. Looks kind of like an S. Aga.
Sorry for the messy handwriting.
No, 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 it's okay.
Good evening, city council members, respectable mayor Paula Devine and the rest. My name is Arren Aga Manukyan. I am with Troop 127 Hyed of the Foothill District from Vertigo Hills Council. And I am here to talk to you guys about my Eagle Scout project. Now, I would like to give a preface as to why I chose this specific project. Now, the title of my project is Clothes for Change. And essentially, what I want to be doing is doing a massive clothing drive and hygiene supplies drive, like shoes. They can bring shoes, toothpaste, toothbrush, deodorant, diapers, stuff like that. And I'm going to put it into a gigantic 40-foot container and send this container off to orphans in Armenia. Now, I'd like to say why I chose Armenia. Well, despite the fact that I'm Armenian, I really want to help the Armenian race. And I've been going to Armenian schools my whole life, and even when I used to live in Toronto, I used to go to an Armenian school. And the kids are here, the kids here are very privileged to go to these Armenian schools. Unfortunately, when I went to Armenia a couple of weeks ago, I saw that the kids really needed help, because they may have some food, but they have no idea about their hygiene. They don't even have clothes. And it was like the saddest thing I've ever seen. So can I pass out the flyers? So I am partnered with Sor La Cuenada, which is Society of Orphaned Armenian Relief. And together, what we are doing is we are collecting clothes from the community. And the reason why I wanted to come here is because I wanted the community's approval in order to do this project. I wanted to be, I wanted this to be a very big global project. And by doing so, I'm hoping that I can make a direct impact for these kids. So where and when you can donate? You can donate on July 23, July 16, and July 9. I chose the consecutive Saturdays of the month of July, as well as there will be a major collection day with barbecue and festivities on the 30th and 31st, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. My email is listed down below. I guess I'll say it. It's arren, A-R-E-N, dot A-G-H-A at yahoo dot com. Or you can reach Sor La Cuenada by looking it up on Google. So my goal is to collect enough clothing to fill 200 large Home Depot boxes. They're like, they're pretty big. And I'm hoping with the community's help, I can reach out to certain people and have enough people donating their clothes so that I can make a direct impact and kind of make this project on a global scale. I want to reach out to a lot of people and people that I actually met with in Armenia face-to-face. And by doing so, I hope to make a big difference in the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Arren. I commend you for your, for your project. I just, I'd like to let people know that they can, I don't know if you mentioned this, that they can deliver clothing and to 1446 Raymond Street here in Glendale? So if anybody out there wants to, and is there any kind of age group or are you just?
We are shooting for infancy to 18-year-olds.
18-year-olds?
Yes.
Okay, zero to 18. Okay, so good luck.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
I hope you achieve your goal, and I hope those that are watching will contribute.
I have a quick question for you.
Councilmember Friedman?
Of all the Boy Scouts that there are, how many of them end up approximately percentage-wise becoming Eagle Scouts?
Four percent.
That's amazing. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Huge accomplishment. I know you're going to do it.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thanks, thank you.
That's it?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Next speaker is, well, Melanie Amazaspian. Am I close? Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor Devine, councilmembers, city staff. My name is Melanie Amazaspian, Community Services Specialist with the Community Services and Parks Department. I'm a member of the Summer Concerts at the Park Committee and would like to inform our guests attending tonight's meeting and our viewers of a free program that our Glendale residents can take advantage of. It is our Summer Concerts in the Park series, which takes place every Wednesday evenings at the north end of Vertigo Park. The event is organized by the Community Services and Parks Department and sponsored by the Office of LA County Supervisor for the 5th District, Michael Diantanovich, and LA County Arts Commission. Our additional event sponsors include Super King Markets, Neptune Productions, LA Print House, Nature's Bakery, and Kona Ice. One band is featured each night. The next concert will feature the Hodads, which is tomorrow evening, followed by Retro Soul, the Swing Cats, and we close the series on August 3rd with Incendio. This year's bands will be playing various genres of music, including music from the '50s, '60s, '80s, swing band, world fusion, acoustic guitar drive. We would love for everyone to come out to the parks and enjoy our live music, make it a picnic day with family and friends, and definitely get out of their homes and enjoy the cool summer breezes and sounds at our Summer Concerts in the Park. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
I don't have a question, but I just want to say that I was recently in Pasadena at their little amphitheater there on Arroyo, is it? Or, yeah, I think.
Yes.
And I said, "When are we going to do this in Glendale?" And they had a fantastic band, which I have the name of if you ever need one. And I'm so happy that we're doing these. So I hope we get a good turnout.
We're very excited.
It's a lot of fun.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next item. All the cards I have.
On the agenda, action items. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, regarding water conservation and drought rate update. 8A1 is a resolution lifting Phase 3 mandatory water conservation, implementing Phase 2 mandatory water conservation. 8A2 is a resolution temporarily stopping the imposition of the applicable Phase 2 water conservation drought rate effective October 1st, 2016 through February 28, 2017.
Thank you. Mr. Zern.
Madam Mayor, members of, I'm sorry, Mr. Jody.
No, no, the very definition of brevity will be my friend and colleague, Mr. Zern.
Madam Mayor, members of, hang on. I've got my breath here. Madam Mayor, members of the council, as has become somewhat of a regular report by me to you regarding the situation of the most severe drought this state has ever faced, I give you now what is the most recent information via this particular update. I have a short PowerPoint that will help me keep it brief, I promise. Let's talk about our success. Phase 3 of the mandatory water conservation ordinance was approved by this council in May of 2016. Since that time, our residents have saved 2.1 billion gallons of water compared to that same period in 2013, which was the comparison period the Water Board held us to. We met the original state mandated cumulative conservation standard of 20%. We maintained about an average of 21% overall. That's the initial 20%. It was later reduced down to 18%. So our gap was even greater than that, but we went with what we originally mandated. If you would call the state mandate was 25%. Some agencies had higher numbers, some lower, depending on what their historical conservation numbers were. And as I said, the drought of 2015 was unprecedented, and the city certainly responded, and I've made that comment many times. Recently, the governor issued his newest executive order titled Making Water Conservation in California a Way of Life. This is on the, the end of the rainy season and what we had all expected were going to be torrential downpours with the El Nino. It never came to fruition quite the way they had predicted, certainly not here in Southern California, although Northern California did about average to slightly above average in both snow and rainfall. As a result, the governor's next order is in effect from June 2016 through January 2017. It's a little bit different this time, so instead of a state mandated number of conservation, the Water Board, I think, due to a lot of pressure put on them, has decided to establish a new conservation methodology that's based on a formula that each water agency must fill out, and we actually had to turn it in June 22nd. It's very specific. It has to do with what our water supplies are, what our conservation programs are, and at the end of that, you come up with, what are we looking at predicting another three years of drought? So it has to be based on that. And as I said, urban and wholesale water suppliers needed to self-certify. The supply situation, as you know, 70% of our water comes from MWD, so by and large, whatever MWD is doing, that's going to drive us in regards to what our overall program's going to look like. On May 10th, the MWD Board of Directors lifted their water supply allocation. Water supply allocation is another term for, that was their rationing program. That was their conservation program. They lifted that and implemented a water supply alert, which is effectively a PR program to continue to conserve. But they are not rationing water in their recently approved budget. They do not have a plan to re-integrate the allocation plan, at least into this next fiscal year. Due to conservation throughout the region and increase in water, mainly from the north, MWD's projections show that they will be able to increase their water storage and thus provide their member agencies more water, including us. I had to take a moment here to compliment MWD. This is a result of years, years of strategic capital investment. And some people would say, "It was a lot of money that they invested," but that is beginning to bear fruit, has borne fruit for those of us down in the South. And their water storage facilities are unprecedented. I think this surprises even the northern part of the state, who I felt and some of my staff felt was looking to penalize the South more through this South certification program, but because of the efforts of MWD, that hasn't been the case. MWD was able to self-certify that they can meet our required deliveries for the next three years. That allowed us to self-certify that we were more than capable of meeting our demand. And based on the calls for continued conservation from the state, despite what our reserves may be, we've been asked to continue to promote conservation. But as a result, we feel that it would be prudent for us to peel back a little bit, go from Phase 3 back to Phase 2. The big difference there is we go from two days a week watering to three days a week. That's really the only difference between two and three. As we enter the heavy use season, the summer season, it's a, we have the water available. It's a bit of a reward for our citizens for doing the good job that they did. It allows you to put a little bit more water in your exterior during the hottest part of the year. And again, we feel that the resources are available. It's still just three days. It isn't going to seven, even four or five. We're still keeping it at three. And this is pretty consistent with what our neighbors are doing and with what most of the member agencies of MWD are doing. The highlighted column is the Phase 2 column, and as I said, the real difference between Phase 2 and Phase 3 is the extra day of watering. The drought charge now, as we go through the heaviest use part of our year and our revenues are based on our sales, we will need to keep the drought charge in place, the Phase 2 drought charge, in place. What we're recommending that we lift it is we get out of the hot part of the year, October 1st, and we lift it at least until the end of February. And then I'll be back, that'll be my next reporting period, come back to you, give you an update on how the winter season went, give you an update on what the forecast from MWD and the state is, and then determine whether or not we need to reinstate the fee at that point in time. But I think we are in a position to pass along our good fortune to our customers and at least have a six-month period where we aren't charging that drought rate. So that's essentially the gist of it. Fairly simple. We've done a good job here. Most of the folks in Southern California have done a good job, vast majority. MWD has been a great water purveyor and has done us and their members well, and as a result, we can pass a little bit of that good fortune on as we begin to emerge somewhat from the drought severity-wise, but certainly we haven't pulled completely out of it. And I think as the governor's statement in his executive order says, conservation will be a way of life. But we anticipate that the Phase 2 will get us somewhere around 10% to 15% reduction. So just as an idea of where we would be, we'd still be at a 10% to 15% reduction over what our previous usage was. We believe, as always, as history has shown, when you get out of these severe drought situations, when you institute mandatory conservation, habits form and they don't change. It is exactly the reason, Mayor, that you had asked me the question on our Urban Water Master Plan. Was it true we were using less water today than we did 10 years ago or five years ago, even though we've had more development, especially downtown area? Absolutely, and that's the reason. People form these very good habits. I think you're going to see that people are going to start being able to work very well with three days a week watering. That could very well become our norm. That's something we can discuss in the future, but for now, I think we're in a very good position. And again, our residents did an excellent job in response. So with that, I'm available for questions.
Thank you for the good news. Comments? Councilmember Friedman?
Yeah, I just more have comments than questions, and I'm for doing this, but I would take a little bit of, I guess, a little different tact than you in terms of saying that we're out of the drought or the drought is ending or we're coming out of a drought event, because I think that the jury is way out on that still. We had an El Nino, and so we got some good snowpack. We didn't get the kind of rain that we would have liked to see in Southern California. And we don't know what's going to happen over the next several years. And it could very well be that this drought is really, you know, going to be with climate change the way that we're going to be in the future, and we may have less of those El Nino events to help us out. So although I agree that right now we should lift some of those restrictions as other agencies have done around us, I thought it was premature for the governor to lift a state of emergency. And I, you know, I hope that we really are coming out of the drought. I just don't know that that's the case. So I hope that people hear that message, too. And you did talk about conservation being a way of life, but people should absolutely think that we don't know what's going to happen over the next couple of years. And as we're changing the residential customers' habits, we also, as a municipality, have been changing our habits and investing in our own capital infrastructure to change the way that we use water. And I guess I would just say that that needs to be a way of life for us as well in terms of how we think about our capital projects, how we think about development patterns. And you know, as you all know, I've called for us to adopt a retaining rainwater on-site development requirement as a response to that. And I think as a city, as we start looking at things like green streets and bio swales, that we also make that a way of life and also start to have that attitude, the same way that a lot of homeowners do, that every drop is precious, and we've been saying that to them. We, as a city, need to embrace that, too. And so even those, you know, people complain about things like us flushing potable water, sometimes out of pipes. I know it's cost-effective for us to do it, but we have to think about messaging and we have to think about, you know, what that resource is going to be for us in the future as we develop all of our policies. I hope that all of our departments think about that and incorporate that into their planning and their projects.
And Mrs. Friedman, I may not have stated that quite correctly. We're emerging somewhat from the worst drought we've ever faced. We are by no means out of a drought. And I'm not sure that drought conditions are going to change dramatically over the next several years. We know that drought patterns are cyclical, so we can always expect that they'll come back. I think with the severity of this one and what predictions are, as you mentioned, El Nino is predicted for this next year, which would be even more severe, dry weather. So I think it's a bit of a relief from this unprecedented drought, but by no means are we out of drought. And I think those points are all well-taken, which is why, you know, quite frankly, I'm not sure I see us reverting back to a seven-day-a-week watering or even a five-day-a-week watering. I think we're going to be able to, and as we go through our next rate case in the Water Department, one of the things we're going to be looking at is the drought conservation ordinances, the drought rates, and how those all tie together. But we may very well come back to you with a whole different phased-in approach that sets a standard that is not free-for-all, not seven days a week, not whatever you want, and not voluntary all that time. It may be mandatory. This is the maximum you can do. And I agree with you, as the governor stated, it will be a way of life. So you're right.
Any other comments?
I'll just, I'll just add that it has to be a way of life for us, because this latest drought was a reality check for all of us. We live in a geographic area that was never meant to be the home of 17 million people. It has become that, and that population is growing still. The water is coming from faraway places. It's not original. It's not, you know, it's not, a very little, a small part of it is coming down from the mountains and is the result of the rain. So we are where we are. It's an arid semi-desert area that's artificially been turned into a green zone to some extent. So it's not going to get much better. So we have to be careful, we have to be mindful, but that one day a week of watering your lawn is probably going to be very helpful, because if you're driving around Glendale, those properties that have chosen not to go native or, you know, people are putting up like gravel and all kinds of moonscape-looking things on their lawns. If those that haven't done that, their lawns are either burnt out or they're cheating somehow. So hopefully, this one day, you know, one extra day of watering is going to be helpful.
Well, for sure, there shouldn't be a signal to start to waste water. We're still in a conservation mode, and I hope that people have formed those habits and continue to conserve for the betterment of everybody. Thank you.
And I should note, Madam Mayor, members of the council, our public relations campaign, our community outreach campaign on conservation will not stop. In fact, if anything, it'll be ramped up even more.
Thank you. Do we have any?
This is horrible.
Okay, he's within his, Danny, motion for the resolutions. Can I take them both at the same time?
So moved.
Second. And do we need a vote on that one? Yes. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Barpedian? Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item on the agenda is Director of Public Works regarding installation of new traffic signals, battery backup systems, rectangular rapid flashing beacons, and railroad quiet zone improvement projects. Specification number 3588R. B1 is a resolution to specify with competitive bidding and authorizing C manager or is designated to execute a contract change order to increase the contract amount by $272,437 to Vart Construction Inc., Inc.'s construction contract C106114 to rehabilitate Kenneth Road and to install rectangular rapid flashing beacons at the Columbus Avenue and Hawthorne Street.
Thank you. Should I go right or left? Mr. Cho?
We'll go straight to Mr. Rubik, who is even more the definition of brevity.
Madam Mayor, members of City Council, there are two critical and time-sensitive, albeit smaller, projects contained in this item. Firstly, our brothers at GWP recently completed the installation of a water main project, which included the resurfacing of a three-to-four-foot-wide trench that housed this 12-inch ductal iron pipe. This was between, on Kenneth Road, between Valley View and Grand View Avenue. And the rest of the pavement is in fairly good condition along this path. However, with the exception of three blocks between Ardmore and Valley View, I'm sorry, Ardmore and Pacific Avenue, that requires extensive resurfacing. And in order to prevent further deterioration, we quickly designed the project. We obtained bids from seven of our contracts that are working on existing projects, and as is listed here, the lowest bidder is at $200,937. It's Vart Construction, which is only about 6% above the engineer's estimate. Number two, the second one, is improvements that we are proposing at the intersection of Columbus Avenue and Hawthorne Street adjacent to Fire Station 21. This is one of the most heavily-used pedestrian crossings in the city, primarily from the residential neighborhoods, people who cross the street to go to Glendale Galleria. We are proposing the installation of a rectangular rapid flashing beacon system along with a painted crosswalk, streetlights, and wheelchair, accessible wheelchair ramps to improve the pedestrian safety at this crossing. And in order to take advantage of the economies of scale, we obtained bids from, again, our existing contractors. We received two bids. The successful lowest bid was from Vart Construction in the amount of $71,500, and we'd like to proceed with this work and finish it before the start of the next holiday shopping season. The total of these two projects added to the existing contract will be $272,437,000, and this will be done as a change order to the existing contract. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? Comments? Move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Barpedian? Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item is City Clerk regarding certifying the campus of the June 7, 2016 special election that was consolidated with the County of Los Angeles presidential primary election. C1 is a resolution reciting the fact of the special municipal election held on Tuesday, June 7, 2016, declaring the results of such and other matters as provided by law.
Mr. Pusakian, I'll give you the honor of the good news.
Certainly, Madam Mayor. Per this council's direction, actually, and because of the certification of the signatures to put a measure on the ballot to repeal the utility users tax, we held an election that was consolidated with the presidential primary. The county conducted that election across 85 precincts on June 7, 2016, and as of today, it is official that the ballot initiative known as Measure N was voted down by a vote of 71%, 71.48% of those casting a ballot in that particular initiative, on that ballot measure. So given that the requirement was a supermajority of a 2/3 for it to, actually not, it was actually simply required that 50% for it to be repealed, it has resoundingly, the no side has resoundingly succeeded in expressing their view. Measure N fails, and this is your opportunity to certify these election results. We'll put this behind you and move on.
Thank you. Comments?
I want to thank the community.
Absolutely. For listening, doing your research, learning about the yes and the no, and casting and going out and voting. So I think we all can voice a huge thank you to the community. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Barpedian? Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes. Next item, please.
He is Director of Public Works regarding Chevy Chase Sewer Diversion and Public Works Yard Recycled Water Main Extension Project. D1 is a motion authorizing staff to proceed with option C and amend the construction contract with Maladan Bluntich Construction Company, Inc. I hope I did not butcher that too terribly. Contract number C105987, in total amount not to exceed $18,900,000, approving a 10% reserve contingency in the amount not to exceed $1,890,000, and authorizing the city manager to sign the associated contract change orders and to increase the contract amount of the PSA with Macmillan Jacobs Associates, contract number CUW016021, in the amount of $200,000, for a total not to exceed amount of $779,100 for construction inspection services, and authorizing C manager to sign the contract amendment. D2 is a resolution of appropriation to appropriate funds from the sewer fund net asset account number 525-27900 to the Chevy Chase Sewer Diversion Project account number 52100-525-501-8088-5181 in the amount of $9,889,305.
Mr. Cho?
Yes, ma'am. This is a very complex project, as you will recall, and one that is quite momentous in terms of its scale as well as its cost, both by what it will do for our sewer operations as we divert sewage from the city of Glendale to the Labwerd facility that we co-own with LA and away from Hyperion. What you will hear is that the project, complex as it was, was made all the more complex by the subsurface conditions that will change some of the focus of the project, but we are recommending to you that we move forward, because as you will hear from Mr. Golanian, even with the changes in what the scope is, the return on investment still justifies the investments, considering the life of this piece of infrastructure and the savings of $1 million a year that we will realize upon its completion. So with that, Rubik will take you through the profile of the project.
Madam Mayor, members of City Council, actually, I'd like to invite Dennis Ambayek, Deputy Director of Public Works, who will make a brief presentation on the history and chronology of the project, just as a refresher, and discuss the three options we have moving forward, and then we'll open it up to questions, if there are any.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Dennis Ambayek. I will provide an update to the Chevy Chase Sewer Diversion Project. The project's approximately 4,300 lineal feet of gravity sewer. It's a combination of open cut and trenchless construction. So there are approximately 1,500 lineal feet of open cut and 2,800 feet of trenchless construction. The project will divert flows from Chevy Chase Drive, which currently goes to the Hyperion Sewer Treatment Plant for processing, to Colorado Street, to the Los Angeles Glendale Wastewater Reclamation Plant. With this project, the city will save approximately $1 million per year in sewage conveyance and treatment fees. The project is located on Chevy Chase Drive, just adjacent to the Public Works corporate yard, and it starts there and it moves northward through open cut trenching method, north through the Public Works yard, north through Los Angeles Street, and it terminates through open trench method at Los Angeles and San Fernando Road. From San Fernando Road, there's a, it goes through trenchless method, northward to Elk Avenue, Elk Street, just south of Colorado Overpass by the I-5 freeway, and it goes westward, south of the railroad tracks, to Los Angeles, to the Los Angeles Glendale Wastewater Reclamation Plant. Project timeline: In February 1, 2011, City Council awarded the professional services agreement to Kennedy Jenks, our design consultant. On July 22, 2013, the preliminary design report was finalized for the project. And the council adopted the plans and specifications on April 7, 2015, and awarded the contract to Maladan Bluntich Construction on July 14, 2015. September 15, 2015, the council awarded the professional, a professional services agreement to Macmillan Jacobs Associates, our construction management and inspection consultant. November 5, Maladan Bluntich Corporation notified the city of different site conditions. April 25, 2016, the city directed the contractor to proceed with the first of eight tunneling drives on a time and material basis. The slide here shows the typical trenchless workspace layout. On the top left is what the contractor performs during the slantless method. The left vertical would be, the contractor would be constructing a jacking pit and a receiving pit. So within the jacking pit, the contractor would lower the jacking machine, the jacking machine, along with the tunneler boring head and the pipe casing until it exits the receiving pit. Change condition: MBC discovered the cobbles and boulders during the excavation of the first two shafts. The geotechnical record did not mention any existence of any cobbles and boulders within the pipe alignment. The city staff was forced to change tunneling size from a 48-inch diameter to the 72-inch because of the cobbles and boulders. In addition, the cobbles and boulders will slow down, slow productivity, will increase the risk of soil settlement, and generate a more unusable off-call material. Also, the pipe casing change requires a new or updated permit from the City of Los Angeles and the SCRA. On May 24, 2016, the city received two cost proposals from Maladan Bluntich to move forward on the project beyond drive number one. The original scope of work proposal, which includes the cobbles and boulders, was in the amount of $17,790,880 for the full completion of the project, but excluding potential additional claims. The second proposal, which is a proposal to amend or for amended or reduced scope of work in the amount of $8,723,044 for a partial completion of the project. This includes the tunneling portion in the City of Glendale only. This excludes the open trench portion and tunneling in the City of Los Angeles and within the Southern California Regional Railroad Authority right away. For this, for this project, we have three options. Option A is terminate MBC's contract immediately and proceed with rebidding the remainder of the project. Staff estimates that, MBC's contract payments to date is $3,650,000. Staff estimates that the early contract termination cost to be $3 million. An additional design consultant cost, because we will have to modify the plans and specs to make sure it's crystal clear to future bidders in the amount of $700,000. An additional construction management cost, because if we're rebidding it, it'll take a little bit longer, we would add this additional $300,000. And same thing for additional staff costs. It ranges between $1.5 to $2 million. If we rebid the project, we estimate it's going to be an additional $16.5 million. This was confirmed by Macmillan Jacobs Associates, for a total cost to complete, including engineering, at $26.2 million. Option A advantages: This provides time for staff to redesign plans and modify the City of Los Angeles and SCRA permits. Redesign and rebidding the project without incurring additional delay claims. Disadvantages: This is the costliest option, and coincidentally, it'll take the longest to complete. It will also have a greater impact to traffic. Now, we estimate this option to be completed in the winter of 2020, which includes redesign, rebid, and construction. The project layout for option A is, the yellow portion is what Maladan Bluntich has finished during tunneling drive number one, and if we terminate, we'll redesign the red portions, and that's what we will be rebidding, the remainder of the project. Option B is negotiate and complete amended or reduced scope of work with MBC and proceed with rebidding the remainder of the project. MBC's contract payments will be approximately $8.9 million. Because MBC is completing the remainder, the reduced scope of work, there will not be any contract termination costs. And then, same thing as option A, we will have to modify the plans, there will be additional construction management costs and additional staffing costs. It's, the amounts are very similar to option A. We estimate to rebid the construction contract in the amount of $10 million, and this is, again, confirmed by a construction management firm of Macmillan Jacobs and Associates, for a total construct cost to complete of approximately $21.9 million. Option B advantages: This eliminates early termination costs with MBC, eliminates potential delay impacts in re permitting the project, generates additional information to redesign the plans. This advantage will, similar to option A, it will have significant delay in project completion. Similar schedule for A, we estimate it's going to be finished in the winter of 2020, and redesign, rebid, and construction. Project layout, the yellow portion is the one that's been constructed in drive one. MBC will negotiate, MBC to complete the green portion, which is the reduced scope of work, and will renegotiate, will proceed to rebidding the project with the red, the red scope of work.
Can I ask a question? Then the red section will not be done with this option?
That's correct. It'll be done, and we will rebid the remainder, the red portion, after...
So it will be an additional sum in addition, what did I repeat that? It'll be in addition to the $21 million?
No. It'll, it'll be included.
It'll be $21.9.
It's included.
It'll be included.
Okay.
But you're losing, you're ostensibly losing time because you're breaking the project. Oh, yeah. And you'll hear option three, or C.
Option, option C. This option is, we're going to negotiate and complete the amended reduced scope of work with MBC, and while they're building the, the reduced scope of work, we will negotiate with them also to complete the project. So, the reduced scope of work is approximately $8.9 million. There will be no termination or redesign costs. This is, this project is, will be the earliest option to complete, which, so the additional cost for construction management and staff cost will be the least in this option. We don't need to rebid it, and we, staff estimates the construction contract cost to be $10 million, which is, again, confirmed by McMillan Jacobs and Associates. Advantages of option C: This is the least expensive of the three options. Consequently, it's also the least impactful to the public. Disadvantages: There is no cost benefit of receiving multiple bids because we'll be negotiating with MBC only, and so we don't, we don't, we'll be paying for construction at the premium. This will not eliminate potential delay issues. Of the three options, this is, this option is the earliest to complete in, we estimate it to be completed in fall of 2018. It's negotiating construction. So, this option C is the same thing. The yellow similarly is what's completed in drive number one, and the upper portion is approximately where the reduced scope of work is, and the lower portion below the yellow and the portion left to right will be the negotiated portion in Los Angeles. In summary, option, option A: Terminate MBC contract immediately and proceed with rebidding of the remainder of the project. Option B: Negotiate and complete amended reduced scope of work with MBC and proceed with rebidding the remainder of the project. And option C is negotiate and complete amended reduced scope of work with MBC and then negotiate to complete the work, to complete the project with MBC as well. So, option A, the total cost to complete is approximately $26.2 million, which is scheduled to be completed in winter of 2020. Option B, in total, is approximately $21.9 million, and the same amount, same time period to complete. And option C is a total of 23, $20.3 million, which we estimate to be finished in the fall of 2018. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor. Yes, Madam Mayor, members of City Council, just wanted to add to some things Mr. Ochoa had mentioned. Back in September of 2015, when we awarded the contract, we reported to council that this was a great investment with a 13-year return on investment. In our opinion, we are recommending option C. Worst-case scenario, we still believe we can get, at best, 17 years in ROI, or the longest will be 20 years of ROI for a system that's potentially going to last 75 years. The sewer systems have a 75-year life expectancy. The difference would be two years saving in construction time, which includes traffic impacts and impact to the public, albeit we may be paying around probably $500,000 to $600,000 premium to the contractor to stay with option C and not rebid the project.
Because we're not renegotiating.
Exactly, Madam Mayor.
I'll move option C.
Second.
I like option C, if you're taking comment now.
Go ahead. Comments?
I mean, just based on the critical points, shorter completion date, least impact to the community, and least expensive to complete it, by a million dollars at least, over option B. So, those things all ring, ring well with me. And so, I would agree that, that option C would be with Ms. Friedman and with staff's recommendation.
And I agree as well.
So, I have a motion?
You have a second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Do you want to make it on all three items, all three resolutions? Sorry, the two motions and the resolution?
Oh, you want one, three?
Yeah, just do the, well, you can do a motion with option C and then, and then do the other two items as well.
Take, we need to take them separately?
No, you can take them all together. I just want to make sure that the record's clear.
That'll be my, that'll be my motion.
That'll be my second as well.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Barrettian. Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Devine.
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item under 9A under hearings is Director of Public Works regarding approval of the final engineer's report and ordering the levy and collection of annual assessment for the North San Fernando Road Corridor Landscape Maintenance District for fiscal year 2016-17. 9A1 is a resolution approving engineer's annual levy report for the city of Glendale's North San Fernando Road Corridor Landscape Maintenance District for fiscal year 2016-17. Two is a resolution ordering the levy and collection of the city of Glendale's North San Fernando Road Corridor Landscape Maintenance District for the fiscal year 2016-17.
Okay. Ochoa?
Yes, ma'am. Last month, you set tonight as the public hearing, after you finalized the engineer's estimate for the Landscape Assessment District. We advise all the property owners in this district to provide any comment or protest letters. To my knowledge, we have received none, which is typical for this commercial industrial district. And if you have any questions, Rubik and his team can answer this for you. And this is a public hearing, ma'am, so you go on a little bit.
Open, open the public hearing. There are no comments from the public. Council, any comments, questions?
I'll move the item.
Second.
At 9A1, the resolution at 9A1, and 9A2.
I'll close the public hearing. We have the motion and a second. We have roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Barrettian. Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Devine.
Yes. Next item, please.
Madam Mayor, next item is oral communication discussion is limited to items not part of this agenda. Speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision. City Manager, may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Okay. I have one card from Robert, I want to say Suarez. Okay, good. Okay. Mr. Suarez?
Thank you, Mayor, and Council, and the city. I just come here to talk to my cousin.
Can you state, can you state your name, please?
Robert Suarez. Yeah. It's my cousin. She's sick right now, but they're asking her to take down so much stuff, you know? We have 5,000 square feet in her yard, and they want her to take out 2,000 of the concrete she had back there put, you know, to try to save water and stuff like that. Now, they want her to remove it, the city, you know? And then, she's got like a patio that's been there for 25 years. Now, they want her to remove that, too. Because the neighbor reported it, saying that somebody was living in her garage, and it was the dogs. And we, she had it sealed up for her kids, where they could play in the van, you know, and stuff like that. And she opened it, that, and she replaced all the windows in the house, which she was a single mother. And, you know, I stay with her, I'm her cousin, because her husband passed away, and he didn't have all the permits and all that. And that's why I come to ask. Somebody tells you, you can do this, and yet somebody else tells you, you can't do that. You know, we've been getting to run around at the city hall. So, you know, I just wonder what to do, you know? Get help or something, you know? They tell us, take the patio, and then somebody says, you can seal it next to the water heater, and they'll pass. And then, they tell us something else, you know? And I've had it in the spectrum, and I says, yeah, they'll pass, you know? When he came and gave us the okay for the windows and everything. So, I don't know what to do, you know?
Okay. Mr. Ochoa, can we?
If I can get the address for the gentleman.
Address.
906 Briar Lane.
Six.
That's B-R-I-E-R Lane.
We will circle back tomorrow morning.
Pardon?
We will contact you tomorrow morning.
Okay.
I'll find the, the case file.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So, you came to the right place.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your help. And have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, too.
Next item?
Madam Mayor, does not appear there are any other cards.
Cards, no other cards.
If there is no new business.
There is new business.
There is new business, I believe.
Yeah, I'll move that, I'll move that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to enter into a retainer agreement with McCune and Harbor, Dana McCune, to assist the city attorney in connection with an employment discrimination lawsuit, Abrahamian versus City of Glendale. The retainer agreement shall, in addition to other provisions, contain a fee cap for the handling of said matter.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Barrettian. Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Devine.
Yes. Next.
Madam Mayor, I'll move that council hereby authorize city attorney to enter into a retainer agreement with the law firm of Brustein and Manasevitt, PLLC, to advise and assist the city attorney on creating and implementing policies, procedures, agreements, procurement methods, and program compliance assurances for the Verdugo Workforce Investment Board, otherwise known as Verdugo Consortium, in compliance with the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act and its rules and regulations. In addition to other provisions, the retainer agreement must contain a fee cap for work as assigned by the city attorney.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Barrettian. Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Devine.
And Councilmember Najarian.
Madam Mayor, I actually have another motion I'd like to make. Thank you. I move that the city attorney be authorized to enter into a retainer agreement to utilize the legal services of Duncan and Allen John Stickman to assist the city attorney in connection with various matters pertaining to electric transmission and to incur all necessary expenses in connection therewith. The agreement shall, in addition to other provisions, contain a fee cap and an estimated budget for the handling of said matter.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Barrettian. Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Devine.
Yes.
Madam Mayor.
Finally, yes.
Yes, finally. I have two motions. I move that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to initiate legal action in Superior Court. The name of the action, the defendants, and the nature of the action shall be disclosed to any person upon inquiry once the action has commenced. The city attorney is authorized to seek appropriate relief, as authorized by the council. The city attorney is further authorized to incur any and all expenses necessary in connection with said matter.
Second. And roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Barrettian. Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Devine.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, I move that the city attorney is hereby authorized to enter into a retainer agreement to utilize the legal services of Kasdan Lipsmith Weber Turner LLP, Kenneth Kasdan, to assist the city attorney in representing the interests of the city of Glendale in a legal action the council has previously authorized the city attorney to institute, but which has not yet been filed. The name of the matter shall be made public to any person so requesting disclosure at the time the matter is filed and served. The contingent fee agreement shall, in addition to other provisions, contain a budget for expert fees for the handling of said matter.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Barrettian. Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Devine.
Yes. And finally, adjournment in memory of the five Dallas police officers and in support of our own Glendale Police Department.
Second.
We are adjourned?